Yeah, I thought maybe you were doing on spring break.
There we go, we're on.
No, not me.
Good evening. I would like to call the Monday, March twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three school board meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Lalaberty. Here. Director T Felton?
Here.
Director W Felton?
Here.
Um, Director Bierman?
I'm here.
And Vice Chair Weber?
Here.
We have five present.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first up is the approval of our meeting agenda and minutes. I will ask for a motion to approve the regular board meeting agenda for Monday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, as well as the committee of the whole and the regular me- meeting minutes from March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Now, do I have a motion?
Oh, okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Moving on to the report section of our meeting. We had public listening session. We had no public listening session attendees or submissions to report this evening. Once again, note, all of our, there is a submission form on our website, and emails and phone numbers for the board are also on our website if you have any public submissions. So, committee of the whole update. At the committee of the whole update, we had an update from our Human Resources Director Joel Miltier, reviewed several sta- staffing resolutions that will come before the board for approval this evening. Finance Director Brady Hoffman reviewed the fiscal budget for two thousand twenty-three budget revisions, revisions as a result of the audit results, enrollment, updated revenues, et cetera. We'll hear more about that later this evening as well, as well as we had some committee updates and reports. And now moving into the superintendent's update, I will now turn it over to Dr. Zambrino to provide some highlights from around the district.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, here we go, already talking summertime, hard to believe with the snow still out there. I think we have some piles that are gonna maybe make it till May, I don't know, we'll find out, we'll hope not, but, um, good opportunities to either get some students plugged in or keep our kids plugged in this summer. So, registration is open now, and you can access that on our website listed there. Uh, we have early learning summer blast for our preschool students to get them onboarded. We also have, um, Summer Learning Academy for grades one through five and seven through eight. And, uh, parents or families, as you're registering your child, please register them for the grade they will be in next year. I know sometimes that's a little confusing which grade are they in, but we're always looking ahead to that following school year. Um, we also have some great opportunities again for plugging kids. And so there's a kindergarten camp for incoming kindergartners, Packer preview for our sixth graders, and then Packer prep for incoming ninth graders. Again, everything on our website, sspps.org/Enroll. Also this summer, we're gearing up for, uh, work for our students. So the Dakota Scott County Workforce Development Board is hosting a teen summer job fair on Saturday, April fifteenth, from ten to two, and that is at Galaxy Library in Apple Valley. Uh, lots of info, more information available on our website. A cool thing they have going on that, uh, teens and young adults, um, can meet with local employers, find out about employment opportunities, either seasonal, just for the summer, or, or ongoing. And participants of all abilities are welcome to attend the event. And then transportation provided for students to and from the high school. The only ask is that you go to the website and please register ahead of time so they know who needs transportation. This spring, I know coming in, uh, just over a year ago, lots of fun events and recognition that happens in South St. Paul. Uh, one of those being the SSP Educational Foundation Roxanne Bliss Silver Apple Award. So we're looking for students or groups of students to nominate. An SSPPS staff member, um, somebody who shows, um, great work and, and we're asking for a hundred words or less. What quality does your favorite employee have that makes him or her so special? So I know a lot of times people think of teachers right away, very well deserved, but really any employee is eligible for the, the Silver Apple Award. Uh, applications are due to the foundation by April first. They asked if you either mail it to them or drop that off in person at the foundation office. All right, some highlights of things that have been going on. So our CAPS students, uh, CAPS again stands for Center for Advanced Professional Studies. The healthcare class student has got to research inequalities in healthcare and then develop steps towards resolving them. So this was done in partnership with Rachel Roberson from Inver Hills Community College and Dakota County Technical College, Vice President of Equity and Inclusion, Dr. Edward Ellinger. Um, and he was a former Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Health. So, a great, um, what they call youth participatory action research opportunity. So, an innovative approach for youth to get involved with community development. So students did research and consulted with professionals, and then they presented their findings to their school communities and faculty from Inver Hills and DCTC. So, always great things going on in the CAPS. Uh, after their presentation, staff and faculty got to ask questions of each group and hear the, the learning and thinking that the kids, uh, got to do. So, I know that the high school students have an opportunity to enroll for any of our CAPS programs. They're working on registration now, so hopefully people are taking advantage of those great opportunities. Our Capoja students, our kinder- uh, kindergarten first and second graders had a visit from author Anthony Walsh. He talked about and read his book Hockey Is For Everybody. Um, you know, his book talks about the struggles growing up playing a sport that is typically played, um, by white athletes and not, not so common for black or African-American athletes. Uh, he said he wrote his book to be a resource and an icebreaker into a conversation about race, but need to, to hear his story and get some inspiration from, uh, Mr. Walsh. We talked earlier in our call about some of the things we're doing to be in good partnership with the city, and I know this has been going on for a while, but, uh, neat thing to have the mayor for the day. I was glad to see that only Mayor Francis had to wear the blue suit that day. So, uh, not, not making our students wear that blue suit, but I bet Parker would look good. So Parker is a Capoja fifth grader who was selected. So he got to have, uh, dinner with the mayor, got to tour, uh, city buildings and a tour of things around town, and then opened up the city council meeting and part of that. Uh, he also read his essay, so students write an essay about why they should be chosen, and so Parker got to read that to the council. And we talked a little bit as well in our, uh, lead-in meeting about all the things going on at the Capitol. Obviously, an exciting time for everybody, but in education, there's, uh, lots of focus on that. But, uh, we had an opportunity here where we saw, uh, Mrs. Hydok- uh, Hydukovich, excuse me, who's a media specialist, uh, got to present, uh, with Governor Walz and media specialists from Minnesota School Districts at the Capitol. Uh, and they helped install a little free library at the Capitol Building. And it's filled with books facing restrictions and bans, uh, in school libraries in other states. So Governor Walz says it's a, a step towards ensuring access to reading materials that are diverse and representative of the students we serve in our schools. So we appreciate her leaning in on that work. Uh, kinda short this week with us being on spring break, but as always, you can follow us on whatever social media format you prefer. And, um, some other important dates, you'll see those on our website or out in social media. We are on spring break this week, but we return on April third. And then later this month, we earn, later in April, we get, uh, high school student family connections. So, racing towards the end of the year, I, uh, was sharing with my team, you know, sometimes people talk about the spring and things might be crazy. I, I've always shared, I don't do crazy springs. Spring is one of my favorite times in schools, and I'm a, a firm believer in running through the tape. And I know our amazing staff and students have that in them. And when we get back from break, everyone will be rested and recharged and ready to just race to the finish line. So excited about that. Uh, as always, our meeting materials are available on our website. So if anybody misses a meeting or wants to catch up on things happening, feel free to hop on there and watch past videos, read notes, and see what's going on with our amazing school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zambrino. Moving on to the-
Madam Chair.
Yes, Bernie?
Doctors, the, could I make a comment? This has personally been a touchy subject with me for a long time. But just now, you referred to an email address at your very first thing. But I would say this, not a hundred percent of the people in South St. Paul necessarily have access to email and, uh, internet and laptops, et cetera. And I would just think as a courtesy, adding the eight hundred phone number or an appropriate phone number would be a good thing to do in addition to having the email address. For those rare people who don't have a, access to internet.
And Director Bierman, are people, do you have access to our, our phone number or to the district office if they had questions?
I'm gonna say this. There may even be someone who doesn't have a phone. There could be. I can't reach that deep.
Then they could stop by the district office.
Internet, don't have laptops, and you're looking at one that up until this year, I spent my entire life without any need for any of that, never had any of that, and now I'm becoming an expert.
Well, and I, I also know that all of our parents, due to our technology levy, thanks to the, um, citizens in the district. Fortunately, we are a one-to-one district, and so all of our students have access to technology. So their parents could also have access to technology, and we are also open to the rest of the community.
I still would urge that a phone number would be a worthy addition.
Well, we can-
You got a grandmother maybe that is involved, but she doesn't, I'm just saying.
Okay, we can definitely take that under advisement.
I would, I would urge that. Then the other thing, I would also say this, with the Educational Foundation application, that has to be, uh, an application turned in, but there was no address given.
Well, that-
The information has been shared at the site level, so it's more of a reminder than, all, most of this information has already been shared with families directly from the school. So it's just more of a reminder, but I hear your point.
Yeah, I just feel that, that sometimes those of us that are illiterate as it is just by circumstance, sometime, I've been in that, just many times I've been in a position where I was stymied because the only thing I was given was an email address, and I didn't do that, so I just never did it. You know, or if I would have had a phone number, I'd have, I'd have called, I would have found out something. I'm just saying. And remember, I am an elderly old geezer with great grandchildren in the school system. Not this one, but I'm vitally interested in, in us old geezers having access too sometimes, that's all.
Thank you so much for your point, um, Director Bierman, and also we have the, um, public comment section at the end of the meeting for other ideas.
By then, who knows?
So, moving forward with the consent, now we got the consent agenda. Um, next, I am looking for a motion to approve the consent items on tonight's agenda, which include financial claims, bills payable, and staffing as presented. Um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Director Lalaberty, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Felton. Um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The post, motion carries. Policies, so we have several policies that are getting an update, and those stay on the agenda for three meetings um, before we vote on them, and tonight is the second reading. And so at our next meeting, we will actually be taking action, um, on those updates to current policies. So now, moving into our business items, we have several business items before us this evening. The first item is the approval of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget revisions. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Director Lalaberty, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Felton. Um, and next, Brady Hoffman, the district finance director, is here to share the budget revisions.
Good evening and thank you. Uh, we're gonna walk through a couple of slides quick just to walk through what these revisions are and go through any questions you guys might have. Um, so first and foremost, um, the budget was adopted back in June of two thousand twenty-two, June twenty-seventh. So the board is required to adopt the budget prior to June thirtieth of the upcoming year so that we have a budget to operate under on July first. So since that time, we've completed our fiscal year twenty-two audit. We have onboarded new staff, welcomed students to the new school year. Throughout this fall and winter months, we've analyzed our enrollment trends. We've reviewed our current year projections, and we've analyzed our budget to actual results to see if there's any changes that we should be making, um, based on more current information. So digging into the revenue side of our budget, um, we are increasing our projected students for this current year. So we're increasing that projection by thirty-three average daily memberships. So while we're increasing our projection, we're still down from the previous year. So we were anticipating a decline of about a hundred students, but we're only gonna be down about sixty-seven is where our current projection is. So that is an increase to our revenue. We also adjust our federal revenues for updated allocation, so we don't always know those full allocations whenever the budget needs to be adopted, so we make those adjustments as part of a revision. And then also with our state aids, there's some other grants and some special ed funding formulas that we don't know precisely where we're gonna be until after the fact. So, um, incorporating some of those adjustments for the revenues. On the expenditure side, we take a look at the audit variances, where did we actually come in? We look at our salaries and benefits now that we have known staffing in place. So whenever we adopted the budget, we didn't know what staffing changes would happen over the summer. So this is incorporating those kind of changes, as well as looking at our non-salary things such as fuel and utilities. Um, you know, as we get better estimates on how the market's trending, we wanna make adjustments for that as well. The last piece we incorporate is also in the debt service fund. So we did issue refunding bonds back in November. Uh, basically refinanced our debt to save our taxpayers' money. So we did, um, have that opportunity in the fall, so we're incorporating that within our revisions. On the overall summary, the first row there is our general fund. So it looks at what was the original budget, what's the revised budget, and then the change. So based on those changes I discussed on the previous slide, we'll be increasing our revenue budget about seven hundred and eighty thousand and our expenditure budget about five hundred and forty thousand. Then on the debt service row, um, incorporating those refunding bonds, the proceeds, as well as the payment of the old debt. Um, that's an in and out of just over ten million. So that's the high-level summary. When we break, break down the general fund into a little bit more detail, the detail of the general fund revision, so that first line item, so the top row shows, here's what was adopted, beginning fund balance, revenues, expenses, ending fund balance. That first row of final audit results is basically resetting our starting point. So now that last year's audit is complete, uh, we're just adjusting to where our new starting point is. So we ended up two point three million dollars better than expected last year. The main portion of that was the Jefferson proceeds when we sold the Jefferson property to the city. So that was over a million dollars of revenue sitting there. Uh, we also had some better-than-expected special ed revenue and some carry-forward items that came through there. Um, enrollment adjustments, so that additional thirty-three students brings in just over two hundred thousand dollars of revenue. Uh, we increased our federal revenue budgets by three hundred and sixty thousand based on those updated allocations, and then adjusted our state, um, state and other grant revenues by two hundred and seventeen thousand. So that's, that's seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase. On the expenditure side, we did increase our staffing costs about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, uh, based on where things actually came in and how the, the budget was landing after we had all of our, the people in place for the current year. Uh, we do have a tech levy adjustment, so based on updated assumptions, we're able to incorporate an additional seventy-seven thousand there within our tech levy. Um, the utilities is that big line item, uh, for an increase. So coming out of the pandemic and where that budget was, it was lagging, and then the increase that everybody's experienced in the market, we do need to make an adjustment there to capture that, uh, additional costs we're incurring to heat and maintain our buildings. And then the last item, we just had some other non-salary-related, um, revisions to make as we had better information available. So all said and done, that improves our fund balance, um, to three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars of a surplus. So the next slide here will show us the breakdown of those fund balances. Um, so we have a few different categories. We have unassigned, assigned, and restricted fund balances. Um, the, the basically, the unassigned is your least restricted, can be used for pretty much anything. Assigned fund balances have a specific use designated, and then your restricted is something that's restricted by the state, by bond documents, by some external entity that limits the use of those resources. Very bottom right corner shows that our unassigned fund balance is gonna be just over ten percent. School board policy is a minimum of eight, so we're surpassing that. Um, one line item I do wanna point out is the, uh, within the restricted category, uh, for operating capital, it's the, kind of the one line item there, that's one point one million, uh, dollars. That is the Jefferson proceeds sitting there. So because we sold physical land, we have to restrict those resources to be used for operating capital purposes. So not classroom teachers, not, um, ongoing daily expenses, it is restricted for capital, uh, which is a great resource to have because we have, uh, a long list of deferred maintenance needs and maintenance that we don't have enough funding for as it is, so this just helps us continue to maintain our buildings, um, to the best of our abilities. Uh, moving onto the debt service fund, so this is the similar slide like the general fund where we reset that beginning starting point. Um, so we're adjusting that starting fund balance by sixteen thousand. We have our in and out for the bond proceeds to pay off the old debt, so this is that refinancing of the debt. This is a benefit to our taxpayers. Um, so the debt was issued, um, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Um, so over the ti- uh, course of time, we were able to refinance the debt, which is then money back to the taxpayers through the tax levy. Um, the other thing I'll mention with the debt service fund, so we are required to levy a hundred and five percent of what our debt principal and interest payments are to ensure we have the resources available in case there's delinquencies, which is where we do accumulate a fund balance over time. And then through the levy process, once that, that reserve hits a certain threshold, that actually gets referred, turned to the taxpayers as well as, as a negative levy adjustment. So, um, it's there right now to make sure we can make our payments, and then over time, it does go back to the taxpayers as we have sufficient funds to make those debt payments. So that walks through the revisions, so I will open up to any questions or, uh, turn it back over to the school board for approval.
Hold up, bro.
Any comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brady. Um, and next up is approval of a resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Director Lalaberty, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Bierman. And now is our Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, just wanted to go over this resolution briefly. This is for the discontinuance and reduction of educational programs and positions. At our last meeting on March thirteenth, the school board received a recommendation from administration to sunset the primary years program and middle years program for IB after the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. In this proposal, administration recommended a restructure of the academic and student support team at Capoja and Lincoln Center Elementarys, which would result in the elimination of an IB, of the IB coordinator and elementary student support specialist positions, with a reduction also in the student support specialist position at the middle school. The school board approved this recommendation at that meeting. In addition, we are aligning staffing and enrollment for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and need to make reductions in our classroom teaching positions at Lincoln Center Elementary, as well as at the middle school and the high school. And those are just, uh, minor reductions to the number of teachers that we have in those buildings based on the number of students that we have enrolling in the district.
Thank you, Joel. Any discussion? The, as this is a resolution, Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director W Felton?
Yes.
Director Lalaberty?
Yes.
Director T Felton?
Yes.
Director Bierman?
Yeah.
And Vice Chair Weber?
Yes.
That is five VAs.
Motion carries. And next up is the agreement with the South St. Paul Office and Professional Employees International Union, Local Number Twelve, for a contract period of July first, two thousand twenty-two, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Wendy Felton, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Lalaberty. And now, continuing, our Director of HR.
Great. The school district has reached a tentative agreement with South St. Paul Office and Professional Employees International Union, Local Number Twelve, for the contract period July one, two thousand twenty-two, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Office and Professional Employees International Union, Local Number Twelve, employees voted in favor of the proposed contract on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. The proposed agreement is within the parameters established by the school board. The components of the settlement have been provided to the school board, and the bargaining unit has voted in favor of this settlement. The agreement includes the creation of step schedule in year one, which provides for increases based on years of service, and two percent in year two, along with a two percent increase in year two for the district contribution for health insurance.
Okay, thank you, Joel, board members, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is to approve the non-renewal of limited contract long-term subs- long-term substitute teacher resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Director Bierman, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Lalaberty. Once again, Director of HR.
Thank you. In compliance with Minnesota statutes, we're required to terminate the teaching contracts of districts' long-term limited contract substitute teachers at the end of each school year. A long-term substitute by definition is one who worked all or part of the school year, replacing a specific teacher who has return rights to his or her position. The contracts of the long-term substitutes must be terminated at the end of the school year. Failure to terminate the contracts could result in the district allocating two teachers in each affected position as the regular teachers exercise their right to return from leave. We have included the attached resolution tonight, non-renew the teaching contracts for the district's long-term contract substitute teachers.
Thank you, Joel, any discussion?
No.
No? Okay, as this is a resolution, Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Lalaberty?
Yes.
Director T Felton?
Yes.
Director Bierman?
Yes.
Director W Felton?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Weber?
Yes.
That's five VAs.
Motion carries. Uh, next up is to approve the non-renewal of probationary teacher resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, W Felton, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Lalaberty. Um, and continuing, Director of HR.
Thank you. Each year, we must release a number of probationary teachers for various reasons, including student-driven scheduling, changes in enrollment, budget reductions, curriculum changes, licensure issues, mid-year placements, and performance issues. Attached is a resolution to terminate the contracts of a number of probationary teachers. This resolution terminates teaching contracts for those listed at the end of the current two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year with non-renewal for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty, twenty-four school year.
Thank you, Joel, board members, any discussion? No? Okay, Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director T Felton?
Yes.
Director Bierman?
Yes.
Director W Felton?
Yes.
Director Lalaberty?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Weber?
Yes.
That's five VAs.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For our last business item this evening is the approval of the acceptance of gifts resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Director Lalaberty, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Felton. Uh, Lisa, will you please read the resolution?
Be it resolved that the school board of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, accept the following donations as indicated in the detailed background listed below. A donation amount of three thousand dollars designated to Capoja Education Center from the South St. Paul Lions, and that is for the Ninja Course at Capoja.
What was that very last, um, that very last word?
Ninja.
I'm sorry?
What was that very last word?
The Ninja Course.
Two things.
The Ninja Course at Capoja.
So our, our PE teacher at Capoja has been working hard to raise funds to set up a Ninja Warrior Corps, uh, follows what you might see on the TV, and the kids just absolutely love it.
Okay.
And so our, uh, great partners at the Lions are supporting that effort, and so want to be, uh, personally, I'll just throw in a big thank you, I know the board is, heads are nodding, we just really appreciate that ongoing partnership and support for the great things going on in the district.
Any further discussion? So Lisa, will you call the roll?
Uh, Director W Felton?
Yes.
Director Lalaberty?
Yes.
Director T Felton?
Yes.
Director Bierman?
Yeah.
And Vice Chair Weber?
Yes.
That's five VAs.
Motion carries. So, now we are moving into, um, reports and informational items, a chance to discuss items of interest in our community and our district. And we are gonna start on the far end with Director Bierman.
There weren't any meetings that I would report on except that I did have the good fortune to work with the Minnesota School Board Association, uh, seminar, uh, lessons, seminars, and they were very, very good.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Director W Felton?
I just wanna put a reminder out there to students. I know at, at the secondary building, they can purchase their yearbooks if they're interested. You can go on the website to order those, they are sixty dollars each. But me being a South St. Paul graduate, I have to say, to this day, we still go through our yearbooks when we plan our class reunion, so we, I do encourage the secondary students to, to, to purchase a yearbook. And also the same thing for the students at Lincoln Center, if they'd like to get their elementary, uh, yearbook. They must be purchased by Friday, April seventh. That's the last day that they can order them from the school. So you wanna be sure, if you're interested in one, to be sure and place your order by a week from Friday coming up. And also, um, Capoja Education Center is having a fundraiser for their first-grade classrooms, which will be held next week, Tuesday, April fourth, at the McDonald's in Inver Grove, right on Cahill there, which is only a, a few blocks actually from Capoja Education Center. Uh, purchases of fifteen percent that- Purchases of 15% that night will be given to the first-grade classrooms as their fundraiser. So if you want to go to McDonald's next week, be sure and inform them that you're from Capoja. And also, on a very personal family note, as Dr. Zambrino had mentioned about Parker Jagair, who was chosen as mayor of the day, I want to say a huge thank you to Parker and his mother, who is Tara Felton Jagair, who is my niece. We want to congratulate them, as Parker is my great nephew. So we thank them and congratulate Parker for doing that great job. So thanks again.
Wow.
Okay. Director T. Felton?
I have nothing to add at this time. Thank you.
Director Lollaberty?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to wish everyone a happy spring break, and hopefully you're watching this on delay because you're actually out somewhere having fun on spring break and not, you know, glued to your television or computer. But I do want to take just a moment to recognize a special anniversary that we have happening around this time. So over a year ago, our superintendent, Dr. Dave Webb, decided to retire, which sent us all on a wonderful journey to pick out a new superintendent. And thing you need to know is that most superintendents start July 1st, beginning of the new year. It's summer, they can prepare, it's pretty quiet around the office. But no, our candidate that we selected, Dr. Brian Zambrino, was selected, and then he's like, oh yeah, I'm starting July 1st, not a problem. And then he gets a phone call that says, hey, how would you like to start in March, ahead of your July start date? And graciously, many things fell into place so that he was able to start early. So he jumped in with both feet. He had to jump into budgets, end-of-the-year banquet, celebration, graduation, and that was just in his first couple of months. And then he introduced, hey, let's go out for a referendum. And so we had a referendum, a very successful referendum campaign that we are so grateful to the community for supporting, but our new superintendent was one of the gangbusters behind. So that went into the summer. We started the new school year with our desired daily experience, which has been a wonderful collaborative effort in order to, how do we want our schools to function on a day-to-day basis? How do we want our staff to relate to our students, and our students relate to our staff, and our parents, and all the way around? And to top it all off, we have had one of the top 10 snowiest winters in Minnesota record. And so all those wonderful decisions about, is it going to snow? How much snow? Can we get the plows out there? Can people travel? Is it ice? Is it snow? Is it, you know, what is happening with districts around us? And now we lead into spring and into the next go-around of budgets and end-of-the-year and banquets and graduation, and heading into what we hope is a quieter summer than we had last year. But we just have a card for Dr. Zambrino to celebrate his one-year anniversary, and we are so lucky and so fortunate. He has led with perseverance, with vision, and above all else, with a sense of humor as we go forward. So if we could just give Dr. Zambrino a quick round of applause.
Wow.
Woo-hoo!
Thank you so much. It's been an amazing, amazing year. You know, I know we've had a little turnover in the board, but I was blessed to get the opportunity by that passport, and we have a great board here now to help be partners in this work. I've shared, I think I shared it at our last meeting, we have amazing staff here, amazing students. I can't imagine anywhere else I'd rather do this work or who I'd rather do it with. And I appreciate what you shared, but everything is a team effort. And so I know that accountability at the end of the day lives here with me for management side of work and with you all's governance, but it truly is that team effort.[1730.51]